Yeah.
Carry on. Angela? Okay.
Recording in progress.
Oh, good afternoon, everyone, once again. It is Tuesday, July 25, 2023, 5:07 PM. I'd like to welcome you all to Richland County Council's Land Development Code Work Session. This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, if you would please, take the roll.
Brenham?
Present.
Pugh?
Here.
McBride? Livingston?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is Item Two, Introduction of Clarion and the Associates Team. Administrator, well, Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Jensen, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Very briefly, online today, we have Mr. Jeff Green with Clarion and Associates. His compatriot is not available today, but he is online. If you have any questions or you would like to engage with them, they can be recognized through Zoom.
And Mr. Jensen, I would just ask them to, if they have some input and want to chime in, they can certainly feel free to give the signal, the hands-up signal on Zoom as well.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Item Three, Process Overview and Current Status. So ACA Jensen, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you would cue up the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, with your permission, the, I have prepared for the council today a very, very brief PowerPoint. Most of this information is information the council has already received before. This is primarily for the benefit of those watching from home who may be joining us late in the process or who have joined us earlier in the process and maybe does not remember this information. So this, these slides, as we go through, we'll go through very quickly. They will be mostly redundant until we get to the last three. So, Madam Chair, if you would, the next one. Really quickly, just wanted a couple of words of wisdom to set the tone. These are from Bruce Lee, whom I happen to love his philosophy on a lot of things. He says, "You have choice. You are master of your attitude. Choose the positive, the constructive. Optimism is a faith that leads to success." I genuinely believe that. Okay, next slide. So this process that we're going through, it's part of South Carolina State Code. We got to do it. Okay, next one, Madam Clerk. Back in, last year in April, the council gave the Planning Commission some directions. That was to prepare a zoning map and to prepare any related Land Development Code amendments. Next slide. This, I know it's going to be hard to read on the screen there, but this is the overall process that we have gone through and where we are today, which is at a work session. Okay, next slide. This is the, the current status last, well, actually, not last year, in 2021, November 2021. Council went through three readings and a public hearing and adopted some text of the Land Development Code, which we referred to as the 2021 Land Development Code text. The statutory period to rescind that action has told. It's done. You can't undo it. It's set. The, currently, we're undergoing, we're, we're working within interim rules. And interim rules for our zoning code is reusing the 2005 text and zoning map. At this point, the council can no longer modify the 2005 code. Again, we're just using it as interim rules because you've already adopted 2021 text. And the council also cannot modify the 2021 text until a zoning map is adopted. So that's the stage. That's where we are. Okay, next slide, Madam Clerk. So today, I wanted to lead off with-
Mr. Chair.
You're recognized, Ms. Newton.
Thank you.
Tracy.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Could you go back to the previous slide? I know we have said this in very, very many meetings that I've been a part of, but just in case somebody was just hopping onto the Zoom or missed it, in terms of your last bullet point, that we cannot modify the 2021 LDC text until we have approved a zoning map, just to be clear again for everyone, we absolutely can modify the text. It is just that the maps have to be adopted first, before those changes happen. And that, once that happens, the LDC, like any other ordinance, can be modified, amended by council at any time, as long as we're following the appropriate rules and procedures. Just, just wanted confirmation, because again, in case somebody only heard, you can't modify. Yes, we can, but we just have to do this other part first. And thank you for indulging me. There are so many questions we get about this.
And either ACA Jensen or Mr. Wright, will you please reiterate what Ms. Newton just said?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The situation is the 2005 code no longer exists. Once you made that vote in November 2021 to accept the text, the, the 2005 code is defunct. So at that point, you have the 2005 text, but you can't modify it, and it's not in active until you have maps to go with it. So you can't modify the text until you accept zoning maps. So at this point, we're kind of, we're in the interim period where we're operating, using the same rules as the 2005 code, even though it's actually defunct. So until you actually complete the code, the code is both text and map. You can't modify it until you complete it. So once you complete it, have the text and map, then you can make amendments. So that's where we are now. We can't actually make amendments until we complete the code, which is means actually accepting maps and getting maps in place.
Newton. Go on, ACA Jensen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So on this next slide, Madam Clerk, if you would. Thank you. Within the 2021 adopted code, there is a table that was created by Clarion and Associates, put into the text and adopted by council, that basically sets forth a translation of codes or zoning districts from the 2005 code to the 2021. And it's, in the code, in the adopted code, it advises the council to use this translation table when creating the zoning map to go along with the text. The council does not have to use it. It just says, "You should do this," because this is, in our best judgment, the translation from old to new. So the Planning Commission, if you would, oh, sorry, leave it there, Madam Clerk. So the Planning Commission, when it took on its responsibility to recommend a zoning map to council, utilized this translation table exactly as the statute says or as the adopted code says to do, as its basis. But it made a couple of minor deviations to reflect on the, the actuality of the circumstances. And so on the left hand of this slide here, the two exceptions were, the Planning Commission recommended that the M1 zone be put back into the text and that that is reflected on their recommended zoning map. And then the second exception was dealing with rural zones. Because if you look on the table there, the, the recommended table, the RU zone could either go to HM or HG, and the rural residential zone could go to HM or RT, based on this. And there are no specific guidelines on how to make that decision in the adopted code. So the Planning Commission went through a process. They came up with a rationale for how to pick which ones, and that is set forth on the left-hand side of the slide there, under where it says, "Exception Number Two." And basically, they said that if it's a rural zone, whether it's residential or rural RU, that 35 acres or larger should go to AG, that three to 35 acres should go to HM, and that zero to three acres should go to RT.
Recognize, Mr.?
Thank you. So just a question. Where can the public go? Because I believe, you know, the first time around, we got a lot of concern about particularly agricultural areas. Where can the public go to see what the actual descriptions are? If you fall into any of these categories, what's allowed, what's not allowed, et cetera?
Fantastic. Mr. Chair, if I may-
Yes, you recognize, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. So on the county's website, we have a new series of pages. So if you land on the Planning Department, Community Planning and Development, there is actually now a link to a page that has everything, the whole process from start to finish, including the 2021 text, a link to the GIS version of the maps, where you can go in, enter your address. Your property will come up. It will tell you what the 2005 code zoning designation is and what the equivalent in the 2021, as recommended by the Planning Commission, is. So once a citizen does that and they find out what their zoning designation is under the 2021 proposed map, they can then go into the text and read all the different uses and so forth that apply to that zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Jensen and your team. I appreciate how the plan is trying to provide more protection for rural areas and green space by taking what was one catch-all designation, even though places were very different, and translating that into three different designations. One of the challenges with that process is that because it's not a one-to-one, that introduces a whole lot of options. I mean, the, the positive is that now everything is not treated the same. The flip side is that now they have three options, and a resident may disagree with what staff has proposed, because this is based on acreage, but not necessarily based on area. Or, or maybe that's incorrect. So I would like for you to address that. And then specifically, my impression is that to address some of those concerns about rural areas, and I imagine that while people want the protections, there will be concerns, that the Planning Commission or staff has proposed a process to allow those communities to come back and ask for changes and reconsideration. Could you address that here?
You're recognized, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Newton. So this particular formula was recommended by the Planning Commission and not by staff, so we can get that very clear. This is a Planning Commission-recommended matrix formula. And in addition to this, and this, let me back up and say that this was discussed over multiple meetings with the Planning Commission. It did not happen overnight. It wasn't one meeting where they just said, "Let's do this." It took months and substantial deliberation to come to this proposal. And in addition to this, the Planning Commission would recommend that the council allow persons, property owners, to petition at no expense for up to a period of a year to change to a different rural zone if they feel like this formula did not exactly match their situation. So let me put that in, in context. So let's just say that somebody came in and they had a two-acre lot, and so they automatically went to RT. But they felt that because of the, what the other uses around them were, really, they should have been HM or AG, whatever, when they feel the three is more appropriate. They could then come back, say, six months after the maps went into effect. They could come back and petition the, the county and go through the Planning Commission process, go to the Planning Commission and say, "You know what? This process, you know, it did 98% of them, but 2% of the county didn't quite get right, and we're one of those 2%, and so we think that, based on the merits of our situation, we should have been this other rural zone." And then the Planning Commission would look at it, just like they do any other rezone. There'd be a public hearing. The neighbors would be invited out, you know, the adjoining property owners. And then there could be a process by which that could be changed on a case-by-case basis. Because if we don't do it that way, we effectively have thousands of parcels, and it would, if we tried to individually do each one, we would be here, you know, before I, I, I would retire before the time you got through them all. So that would be probably not a desirable outcome. I think you have better things to do. So by doing this broad-brush approach, and then on the backside, allowing folks to come in on individual cases and have their, the merits of their case addressed through a normal rezoning process at no cost to them, the Planning Commission felt that was the best way to, to go about it.
Thank you.
Branham, and then Ms. Mackey.
Thank you to Ms. Newton for, for raising that point about folks being able to have that application fee waived for a year if they're formerly RU. And thank you to ACA Jensen for preparing the materials. I just want to confirm, and we've been over this before, but Mr. Jensen, just to encourage you on that, on the breakdown of the former rural properties, for that HM district, if we could designate that as being more than three acres and less than 35 acres, just so anybody that hits right on the three-acre line and right on the 35-acre line would know which way they fall. Is that fair?
Recognize, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Sorry, I almost said, "Mr. Chair," because he was the former Planning Commission chairman. Thank you, Mr. Branham. Yes, we, we had spoken about that before with the Planning Commission, and they recommended that. And I simply forgot to update it in the materials. So thank you for, for reminding me of that.
Branham.
That's all for now. Thanks.
Okay. General Vice Chair.
Thank you. ACA Jensen, just for all of us, can you, you talked about the application fee being waived. Can, one, you state what the current application fee is? And then, I guess, going a little deeper in relation to folks being able to come and ask for this rezoning. It's up to 12 months, and is it? I guess the example you use, you use rural. My question is, is there limits on that? So if it is, let's say, rural now, but they want to come in and ask for something as residential or high-density or commercial, do they still get to make that request without an application fee? Or is this very, is it more specific on what qualifies for the no-application fee request?
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Oh, you recognize, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. So the Planning Commission's recommendation is only for rural zones to rural zones. And, and again, it's because the code recommends three different zoning possibilities and the, the impracticality of trying to individually do that instead of using a broad-brush approach. So they said, "Only if you are RU now, and you go to one of the three, HM, RT, AG, and you, and it doesn't work, then you can come back for a different one of those three roles, but not changing to commercial, not changing to something other than a rural zoning designation."
And how much is the application fee that we're waiving?
And I don't, and I, I knew you were going to ask that, and right off the top of my head, I don't know what it is. It, it's not, but Mr. Price could, could probably quote "to the penny", if, if you would recognize him, Mr. Chair.
And his last name is Price, right?
Yes, sir.
Last name, all pun intended, Mr. Price.
So the fees for rezoning is $105.31 for the first 10 acres and $105.31 for each portion afterwards for every 10 acres.
Before I get to you, Ms. Newton, Ms. Mackey?
All right, just one more. And if a property owner owns more than one parcel, we're not capping how many. So if they own three parcels that are rural and they want to rezone, we're going to waive the application fee for a parcel. Is that?
Yes, ma'am. We would do that. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Newton?
Thank you. And just again, to confirm that even though you're waiving this fee for the first year, it doesn't mean that anyone in the county is limited from when, when they request a rezoning. So any citizen of, with any zoning district can request to have their property rezoned at any time. Not for free. No, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yes, ma'am. This would not affect our, our rezoning process in any way. It would only waive the fee for those who are in a rural zone now and that want to change or, or disagree with the designation that they were assigned.
Jensen, continue.
Okay, next slide, Madam Clerk. So again, this is in your packet, but this is the actual matrix translation table that the Planning Commission used when they created the map. So again, they slightly modified the one that's in the 2021 LDC text. And this here for, just for the record, is the actual one that they used, that they assigned to staff to prepare the zoning map based on. Madam Chair, right, Madam Clerk? These are the next steps. An abbreviated version of this is in your packet, but this is the entire next step process for the map and any text amendments that the council might want to approve in the future. So if that was to occur, again, this is the calendar. You could theoretically approve the map, go into a text amendment process, starting with the DNS Committee, coming out of DNS Committee to the council, and you could theoretically have a third reading on text amendments by January or February, depending on your meeting schedule of next year.
Questions from the body regarding this item and steps? Jensen, question.
Yes, sir.
This is just a proposed calendar, right? And I haven't looked at the calendar in its entirety, but would it be possible to not only pass the, the maps this year, but also even the text amendments as well? Because my preference is to get this done in 2023 and not carry this over into 2024. Because the longer we wait, I, I just don't see how it gets any better. We've already gotten the recommendations from the Planning Commission. There's been input from the public regarding those text amendments. Frankly, this should have been done three years ago. And so it's my intention now to push to get this done in 2023.
So the calendar, Mr. Chair, if I may be recognized.
Yes, sir.
There is, it could be condensed slightly. The, on August 29th, I have an optional work session, which would be a continuance of this work session, if desired by council. You could move first reading on the zoning map up to that date, and then you could hold a public hearing instead of at the zoning public, at the ZPH meeting. You could hold a public hearing during a regular council meeting. So this particular schedule assumes that the, the public hearing will take place at the regularly scheduled zoning public hearing meeting on September 26th. But again, if you desire to have a public hearing during a regular council meeting instead of at the zoning public hearing meeting, this calendar could be condensed.
You recognize, Mr. Wright?
Yes. Since the Planning Commission already made its recommendations, it doesn't have to go to, back to DNS to review. So that, that's not required, did it go back to a committee, since the Planning Commission already gave its recommendations. And I know that in the committee meeting, we talked about having the first reading of the text the same night as the third reading of the maps. So that can be done. It's just, the maps have to be passed before you do the text. So that can happen the same night. You pass the maps, and then you, then you do the first reading for the text. So I think you can, you could forego the DNS Committee, and you could have on the same night the third reading of the zoning map and the first reading of the text amendments.
Any additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've held a lot of my questions in my comments, and I'll just take them offline, because we only had an hour, and I wanted to get the information. So with the time restraint, I would say if you're scheduling another work session for us, you know, an hour really limits us to be able to dig deep into, if we need to dig. It just removes, I'm buried. If you would give us a little bit more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Anything else from anyone? All right. Next item, adjournment, entertain a motion. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Whoa, 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 whoa.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought, oh, that, Mr. Jensen, what it says, "Next steps," page nine. I thought that was the last page. My, my. Well, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Jensen. Continue on.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if we may move to, to Item Five, the, the discussion on the zoning map. And so.
That's what you threw me off, Mr. Jensen.
I'm sorry.
We jumped all the way to page nine. I thought we were on six for "next steps," but-
Yes, sir.
Continue on.
Okay. So thank you. So, so Item Five, the proposed zoning map, this really is an opportunity for you, as the council, to discuss amongst yourselves anything that you have, concerns, issues related to the zoning map, including the process by which the Planning Commission formulated it. And again, understand that the Planning Commission, during their entire deliberative process, they were discussing both the text amendments and the, the map itself during that process. And so many of their mapping decisions had root or were based substantially on some of the text discussions that they were having simultaneously. So when we look at the map that's proposed, again, it's online. It's, it's of a size that we physically cannot create one to bring into council chambers or put in your packets. When you're thinking about that, think about the fact that they had recommended to put the M1 zone back into the text, which is why it appears on the zoning map, recommended by the- by the Planning Commission, even though it's not in the 2021 LDC code. In addition to that, the Planning Commission heard numerous comments from established neighborhoods, particularly pocket neighborhoods, where there were concerns about uses in the residence, single-family residential zones primarily. And so, their recommendation to move forward with the zoning map were based on some assumptions that there would be text amendments removing those uses that were not, that caused consternation amongst citizens. And so those are important things to understand when you're looking at their map. As our county attorney has stated, a map has to be adopted before we can get to these text amendments. That's just part of the process. But it's important that while you're considering this, that you understand what the Planning Commission was discussing, the conversations that they were having amongst themselves, and what they were hearing from the citizens in the community while they prepared this map. So that is all I have, Mr. Chair, and I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Questions or comments from the body for A.C. Jensen on this item, item 5A. You recognize, Mr. Branham?
I can just, again, as the former chairman of that Planning Commission throughout the period, just speak to why we did what we did on the current RU properties on that breakdown. We definitely looked at the description of the zoning district as it was set out in the text of the 2021 ordinance, and we looked at the recommended basically minimum lot sizes for per dwelling unit in those three new districts that were proposed, and we went off of the minimum lot sizes. That helped informed where we created those lines of demarcation, zero to three, three to 35, and 35 and up. So we definitely talked about a couple of different ways we might have been able to go about utilizing public records to try to determine current uses of properties, but that's very difficult. And at the end of the day, you just got to, you got to pick kind of a rule by a standard, and that was the standard we went by. We did want to create that fallback, where people who had been zoned RU would be able to go in for a year and ask for a different consideration if they didn't think it was appropriate. I will mention too, that that was, that was the only three zoning districts that I remember us adjusting the density for dwelling units, or again, sort of the minimum lot sizes. The 2021 version of the text had gone pretty far in moving the minimum amount of acreage required per dwelling unit from what it is in the 2005 code. And we got a lot of feedback from different people for different reasons about maybe there was too much of a change, and going from requiring something like seven tenths of an acre per dwelling unit up to seven, 6.7 acres per dwelling unit in that new AG district. And so, we basically struck a compromise, where we cut the densities in half and just met in the middle, which is why we made those proposals, so that the disruption was reduced, while at the same time, working to try to achieve the objectives of protecting some of those working agricultural lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Branham, any additional comments, observations? Ms. Newton, you look very eager, so you are recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because I thought you had, that we're on, we just completed 4A, and we still have 4B. Is that correct? Or did I?
We're on 5A.
Okay.
Proposed zoning map.
Gotcha. Well, I was hoping that we were going to go through the recommendations that were made by the Planning Commission, but if there are other members of the body who have different questions that they want to address first, then certainly, I'll yield to that.
Is there no, or different questions from the body? You recognize Councilman Weaver?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Jensen, my question is, what do we have in a public education forum planned beyond the meetings that we've held around the county? Is there any kind of like media campaign planned, letters going out to property owners? I mean, what are we doing before we pass the final map and the text to let the public know exactly what these changes mean? Is there anything else in the hopper that the county's planning?
Recognize, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we, the county's Office of Communications, in addition to the website, which we've already done, is putting together videos and other information, and media blasts and other things to get out this, as much information as we can as quickly as possible. Yes, so we have put together a media campaign for this.
Thank you. Else? Ms. Newton, what was your request again?
Well, we only have 20 minutes, but I was hoping that we could go through the recommended text amendments from the Planning Commission, or at least partially address those. I think we might have to have another time. I know there's just, there are a lot of questions, and there's a lot of desire for information, not just on part of the citizens, but for us who will be asked to vote for them. So perhaps, given the timing that we have left, Mr. Jensen, if you wanted to pick some of the ones that have been cause for the most concern, I'm not sure how to address that. Or, you know, if other members of the body don't want to review those, then I can look for another forum to have this conversation.
At 21 minutes left, so why not use the time? So, Mr. Jensen, if you would just start with the text amendments, maybe one by one, or perhaps ask if there are any, I don't know if we just ask, are there any questions regarding, you know, the text amendments, one by one? Or you just, or to Ms. Newton's point, the ones that may have, that to your knowledge or has been brought to your attention and may have created the most consternation, or perhaps confusion among our residents?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may be recognized?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. While the clerk scrolls up through this, this is pages two and three, I believe, of your packet. Yes, it's the two pages immediately following the agenda. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is the list of recommendations from the Planning Commission, and I don't want to have us engage in deliberation, obviously, because I don't want to upset the process. But very simply, there were four major issues that we heard from the citizens, and when I say we, I mean the Planning Commission and me acting as their staff to prepare their materials. And one of them was the one that I just mentioned, which came primarily from infill properties, properties, pocket areas of long-term established, primarily single-dwelling neighborhoods. And there were, the existing 2021 text, as adopted, included the ability to put in three, two, three, and four dwellings on a property, whether attached or detached. This was a new use that was recommended out of the comprehensive plan. It was not in the 2005 code, and we heard a lot of feedback from citizens saying that this was too new, too sudden, too jarring. It would change their neighborhoods. And so, the Planning Commission recommended taking that, those uses out. And those are specifically out of the R2, R3, and R4 zones, and then also to remove the townhouse use from the R4 zone. So that was one of the first things the Planning Commission addressed in its recommendations. The second one, which was already addressed by Mr. Branham, was to amend the densities within the rural zones, the three different rural zones. In particular, the 2005 code dramatically, I would say dramatically, I'm going to use that word, changed the numbers of units and the densities in the rural areas, and the Planning Commission dialed that back a little bit, brought it back closer to what it is now. There's still differentiation between the RT, HM, and the AG zones, but the gap is not as great as it was before.
Can you point us, I mean, I see the rural lots, but just for everyone, can you point us to the recommendations for that?
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, you recognize, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, sir. So yes, so if you look on the screen, and in your packets, the number three, four, and five lines there in our rows, where it says rural lots under the topic, that is where it tells you what the Planning Commission saw in the 2021 adopted text and what it's recommending. So again, changing the density, basically it cuts it, it reduces by half the acreage you need to have for a lot in the AG zone, in the second, in the what would be line four, where it talks about the HM zoning. In other words, it goes from .33 dwelling units per acre to .66. And you have to understand, again, that means, .33 means you have to have three acres to have a dwelling unit. .66 means you have to have an acre and a half to have a dwelling unit. Then on the line number five, rural lots, increase the maximum lot density in the RT zone from .67 to one. Basically, that means you would have had to have one and a half acres to have a lot. Now, under the Planning Commission recommendation, it's one acre, basically, to get a building lot in those zones. So basically, it took in half the amount of land you have to have to have a lot. So, you know, if you needed six and a third, or six and two-thirds to have a lot, now you only have to have three. If you had to have three, now you have to have one and a half. If you had to have one and a half, it actually went down to one. So that's basically, they just said, you know, that gap was too big as adopted. Okay, thank you, sir. So one of the other big overriding concerns that the Planning Commission had was the existing provisions in the 2005 code, and that carried over into the 2021 code, of clustering and reducing lot size within existing zoning dens, or zones. So effectively, under the 2005 code and in the 2021 code, a residential zoning district that is primarily for single-family or single dwellings, you know, you can have lot sizes that are smaller than what the mathematical average would be. So for example, let's just say that, you know, two lots are allowed per acre in a zoning designation. You would think, well, if two lots are allowed, then that means each lot must be half an acre in size. Well, it doesn't actually work that way. The way it works is that it's a density calculation, and so it just says that you can have two lots per acre. One lot could theoretically be very small, and one lot could be very big. And so the Planning Commission had concerns about that, and they said, you know, that's not what we're trying to say. We're trying to say that if it's a two units or two lots per acre designation, then we expect the lots to be fairly large, close to half an acre in size. And so what the Planning Commission did is they recommended a range of lot sizes, so that, yes, you could have some smaller lots, but they couldn't all be smaller lots. So if you had, let's just say, four units or four lots per acre, they may not all be quarter acre in size, but some of them may be a little bit bigger than a quarter acre, some of them may be smaller than a quarter acre, but you wouldn't get a subdivision where you're up against, let's just say, half-acre lots in some of our older neighborhoods, and then all of a sudden have 9,000 square foot lots, you know, combined. You'd have a mix or a range of sizes to better buffer, or not, buffer's not the better word. You'd have a range of lot sizes that are more consistent with what is already there. And this goes back to a motion that Councilwoman Newton made, my gosh, I almost want to say it was three years ago, that something to the effect of established land development code parameters that would assure that new subdivisions coming in closely matched up with the existing development in the area. And that's what this does, is that this helps to make sure that new subdivisions are not jarringly different from the subdivision lots that are already there. It provides a range and more compatibility with what's already on the ground. So that, so that's the, everything that's basically under subdivision design, if you would scroll down a little bit, Madam Clerk, all of those changes that are around subdivision design primarily deal with that. So you'll see in the table that there are a whole bunch of them labeled subdivision design. There are different methods of doing that, because the code, the existing code in 2005 and in 2021 had numerous places where this clustering took place. And so the Planning Commission went back and found all of those different provisions, and so you'll see modifications to address each one of those. That's why it appears in multiple locations and not just one ordinance amendment. Madam Clerk, if you would scroll down a little bit to the next page?
Mr. Jensen, just, I'll just put a pin right there. Ms. Mackey, you recognized?
Just a question related to, I guess, the thought process behind the subdivision design comment.
Yes.
The change that the Planning Commission has recommended with, like you said, trying to keep all those, is that best practice or a common practice that we would see in maybe other metropolitan cities or suburbs outside of metropolitan cities as they grow, when you look at having diverse housing? Is that a common practice, what we are, what they recommend?
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Yes, ma'am, it is. Having a mix of lot sizes, not a uniform lot size throughout a subdivision, is a best practice in terms of planning. One of the things that, it is not in this particular version of the code yet, but I'm hoping that at some point in the future, we will be able to have this discussion, is that best practices show that a mix of lot sizes, of lot, of unit types, of income levels and so forth, produces a stronger community than homogeneity. It just does. That, all of the practices show that. Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't going to be neighborhoods that are high-density and low-density and so forth. That's going to happen. Downtown Columbia is not the place to put single-family homes anymore. It's just not. You know, this is, that's the place for large, tall buildings with mixed uses that are walkable and so forth, you know? And so those types of things will still occur. But the way that we go about thinking about how we do our neighborhoods, it's changing. And those, you know, the science backs it up, the practice, the history backs it up.
Thank you, A.C. Thomas. That's definitely a concern that I have, and so I wanted to make sure that we are following best practices and being able to offer diverse housing options. And as folks come in to build, they have that ability to do so throughout the county and have diverse options. And I know you didn't mean this, but just to clarify for the record, we have no control of the zoning in the city of Columbia. So whatever they do or don't want to build is completely up to them.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I said that simply for a point of reference, to understand that we live in a region, and we have partnering cities here in our county, that we don't control where that's correct, and some places are appropriate for certain uses and some aren't. And, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
Recognize, Ms. Newton?
Very quickly, only because my name was intoned. In terms of the motion that Mr. Jensen referenced for me, it was not in regards to not allowing a diversity of housing, but was rather to make sure that we do what we can to preserve the character of a community. So if you have a rural community that's in the woods, maybe you don't just slap up 20,000 houses right next door. Obviously, I'm being a little facetious, but it wasn't about different size units or income levels. It was more about how can we, and what can we do to protect the character of a community? So that was the, those were the motions that he was referring to. Thank you.
Mr. Jensen?
Thank you, sir. Yes, and the Planning Commission took it in that vein. That is exactly what they did. This, their proposal here simply adjusts the lot sizes and makes it so that if a similar zoning comes in, or if a property that is currently vacant or undeveloped is adjacent to another property that is developed that has similar zoning, that the future uses of it will be compatible or similar, at least to the ones that are already existing in the developed property. That is what it is, which goes back to what Ms. Newton's point was originally, that the new development that comes in is compatible with the existing neighborhoods.
It appears to me that, Mr. Jensen, you have gone through all the amendments here, or at least as they're categorized. And so, Ms. Newton, did you find Mr. Jensen's summary sufficiently thorough?
It was an excellent summary, and I guess that I would just add that Mr. Jensen will have other opportunities to summarize in District 11 for people who want to hear it there.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Mr. Jensen, anything? Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Jensen, anything else before we move to item seven?
The only thing that I would request of the council at this time, our consultants, Clarion, have a long task, arduous road ahead of them in terms of amendments. If if I can give them the go-ahead to start working on these red lines to bring back to, because again, these are from the the Planning Commission, they're just, you know, we want to change this, we want to change this. They're not the actual text amendment. So while you're going through the mapping process, if I can have them in the background, working on this, so that when the time comes that you are ready to actually consider amendments, I can bring those to you forward to expedite the calendar, I would like to do that. I just simply do not want to have them go forward and spend all these resources if no amendments are going to be considered by the council after the maps are approved.
Are you asking for a decision tonight?
I just, I just would like direction in the next, if tonight, if possible, but if not in the future, I would just like to receive direction to go forward and to let them do that.
Oh, Mr. Wright, last I checked, we can't direct Mr. Jensen to anything, right?
The administrator.
As much as I would love to direct him.
Yes.
And I'm not sure we can take action at a work session, right, Mr. Wright? I didn't think we could.
Right. No, this is a work session, so there's no action to take.
But certainly, it's noted.
Okay.
Yeah, your request.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anything else from the body before we get to item seven? There'd be nothing. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second?
It's been moved to properly second. That's not debatable. So, Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Snaky?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We are adjourned for five minutes.